We'll call the April 22nd, 2019 meeting of Peters Township Council to order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigel.
President.
Mr. R. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening was to be a public hearing regarding the changes to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and land development ordinance. Since we are still waiting for the court reporter, we will move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the April 8th, 2019 regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
I abstain. I was not present.
Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next, we have special reports, which is the honoring of our girls' state high school basketball championship team. They will not be here until...
Till they finish across the street.
Till they finish being honored across the street. So we will move on to audience comments. This is the section of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Just come forward, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Julie Cantrell, 446 East McMurray Road. I just, I know on the agenda later under the miscellaneous is the nondiscrimination ordinance that I had asked about. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I know Peters Township doesn't discriminate. You guys, a couple people that I've talked to have said that, that you don't discriminate. I know that, which is why I think that, you know, it'd be great to just to have that on writing so that everyone else knew that that was not in our township. So, like, it wouldn't hurt anything to have it. So that's, that's why I'm here, is just to follow up with that.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Speak when it's on. Get to the agenda.
Okay.
Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business, of which there is none. So we'll move on to new business. First item there is awarded a bid for the construction of a portion of Rolling Hills Drive.
So, um, the township opened bids for phase one of the construction of Rolling Hills Drive, where there were eight firms that took out bids, documents, only two have responded to that. The low bid is from A. Liberoni, which, from the township's and school district standpoint, we believe to be a plus. Liberoni is the contractor that is currently being used by the school district for the earth moving at the high school project. So this is going to make coordination between, you know, a non-issue there. The other thing is that I think that is noteworthy is that this bid is actually substantially below that, which was the estimate for this work. So, Mr. Rile, the business manager for the school district, was here for the bid opening. He, as well as us, are pleased with the outcome of that. And it's going to be our recommendation that that a base bid be awarded to A. Liberoni in the amount of $1,570,732.16.
So moved. Motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. I know Mr. Robinson's there, but has the school board concurred with his recommendation? Do you know, are they voting on that, or?
The school board wouldn't vote on this because it would, it's a contract with the municipality. So I, I don't think any action is required by the school board.
But they have agreed to pay part of that, right?
They are going to pay half the cost of this.
If maybe that's on their agenda tonight?
Oh, we don't know. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is awarded a bid for asphalt under the South Hills area council of government's cooperative purchasing program.
So, under Shay Coggs' cooperative purchasing program, they bid a variety of spring commodities. The one that requires an award by township council is that for asphalt, because we will expand in excess of $25,000 on asphalt. What we have done in the past is what we're suggesting that we do this year is to award a contract to both Hanson Aggregates, as well as Euravia Atlantic Coast. The reason being is that depending on the time of the year, you don't always have access to either asphalt plant. So what we do is a matter of course, we purchase when we can from the lowest bidder, and when that is not available, then we use the other, the other provider.
There's no minimums that we require to buy?
No.
I make a motion that we award the bid to both Hanson Aggregates and Euravia Atlantic Coast LLC, DBA Northeast Pavement.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a lease for property owned by the township located along Valley Brook Road.
So as council will recall, staff was directed to solicit proposals for the development of this piece of property that's located along Valley Brook Road. And as, as the, the picture here shows, the vast majority of that property, excuse me, the vast majority of that property is restricted for the use as a, a stormwater retention pond. So, um, there is only limited space to develop around this, so we weren't surprised in February when we went to solicit proposals that the only proposal that we received was from Mr. Robinson. Mr. Robinson, in exchange for a long-term lease, has agreed to maintain the pond and the landscaping, to construct 15 parking spaces, to construct a path and a bridge to connect the property to Arrowhead Trail, to install fitness stations, to transfer the ownership of two and a half acres of land adjacent to this to the township, which does have value to us from the standpoint of stormwater management, and then pay a rent to the township equal to two and a half percent of the gross revenues. It's my recommendation that the town, that this, from the township's perspective, that this is a good deal. The lease that's in front of you has been reviewed by Mr. Smith. He could answer questions with regard to that.
I reviewed the lease also last week. I reviewed it again prior to the meeting. I just note there are a couple typos, which John and I can discuss afterwards, but I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to enter into the lease agreement.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple comments I'd like to make. Mr. Robinson's a great businessman and a township man. He characterized this as a very generous offer. I appreciate that we're trading land. My concern about the lease is that it's a little vague as to how the execution is going to go. And there are a few things in there about potentially waiving the traffic impact fees, a driving, a drive-through if he decides to tear down the building, and a few other points that I think haven't been flushed out. And I just wondered, Mr. Lauer or Mr. Smith, if you could talk about the impacts. I also am not in favor of a 25-year lease with five, five-year extensions. And there's the whole matter of his potential ability to sublease, which puts a third party into the mix. So, a little unclear.
Let me answer the first question. What's required by this lease is that there be submitted a site plan that will go through the planning process. So, you know, in terms of developing this site, it would be like any other commercial site in town. From my perspective, the longevity of this lease is actually in the favor of the township and not necessarily Mr. Robinson. He may see it differently. But this site can only ever be a stormwater management facility, and it will be that forever. So at our last meeting, we had the renovation of four stormwater ponds, and that was going to be done at a cost of $40,000 or $10,000 apiece. The work that Mr. Robinson has already done, with my permission, is well in excess of what was done on any of those sites. And so his obligation to continue to maintain this in the future is an obligation the township will have on this site regardless of whether he assumes it or we assume it. The only difference will be the township will not be paying for it. So, you know, from that perspective, you know, it doesn't matter to me how long this lease is. I think a longer lease is in the township's favor.
And I will tell you, Ms. Merrill, a lot of the issues that you raised, we're not the first time we've talked about those. Those actually, I don't think either side took offense to those because we raised some of the same issues in our office. Mr. Lauer raised some of the issues. They drafted the first lease and it came to us. The 25-year lease, immediately, I changed it just on sight unseen to 10 years, just as a knee-jerk reaction. And then in consultation with the manager and really with what he just explained, it made more sense as to why, and this is somewhat unique. Now, as to like the drive-through when it comes through and the site plan, whether that can be even accommodated at this site, I don't know. What we did put in here, because unlike any other applicant, we are the landlord to this site, that we have a lot more control and say over what the building looks like and what features it will take on. So we had less concern about that as well. And some of your points are well taken, weren't even, you didn't bring up in terms of how would we get to have them account for the accuracy. And I think if need be, whether we add that provision in, a court definitely would allow for an accounting to prove the grocery receipts and how those would be spelled out. But, I mean, I think a lot of these points were well taken. This was somewhat of a give and take with the, Mr. Robinson's group back and forth, and this is kind of where we are. The common area is the same thing as to how much they're going to need. I think because the lease speaks to that concession site versus the parking areas, we do have clause in there that it's beneficial to the residents because of the maintenance obligations of Mr. Robinson beyond the stormwater on the actual site itself. So you were right, I think, to raise those issues because I raised a lot of them myself. And I think with our collective efforts, so this is what they came down to for your consideration.
Well, you're asking council to approve that. Now, as somebody who wants to vote yes or no, I wanted to know what the answers were. I mean, I think it sounds like there'll be a burden as far as managing the rent or how the leases will be, the lease will be paid. I mean, you're talking gross sales, you're not talking gross revenue. There's difference. So, you know, I don't know what the impact will be on staff. So do you, are you comfortable that there won't be any impact?
I don't believe so. I don't think that this, I don't think this is going to be a tremendous source of revenue to the township.
No, I don't expect it will be. I just don't know how you're going to determine what it is.
I think we're going to work with Mr. Robinson to come up with a method that works for both of us.
Yeah, and I think the, the method is spelled out in the lease. It's just, how do you guarantee that the, the numbers you're receiving are accurate, I think was just questioned.
Yes.
And, and if we questioned it, obviously we'd ask for an accounting. It's not in here, but I think it's implicit, the court would allow for that to make sure that those numbers are accurate. But the bulk of this is just an amenity I think the board was looking for for township residents that we didn't want to run, and these other oddball things, which you don't have many people that are going to run a concession stand, maintain your stormwater retention ponds, which is...
Yeah, no, I don't disagree that it's probably one of the only potential benefits to that property. And again, Mr. Robinson's done some tremendous things with other properties that look like they didn't have a second life, and he's given them a second life. So I'm not questioning that. I'm trying to understand the township. And my other concern, and I raised this, and bear with me, gentlemen, the idea is that I think we need to really think, you know, some of these things, we react to things a lot, and I think the town center and some of the other things that are coming up, we should probably be a little more proactive about how to handle these. If someone else would come to us, would we do the same thing? That's all.
And remember, Ms. Merrill, this went on for, Mr. Robinson, at least a year, where we've researched as to how to do this, to open it up to the full public. So this was ventured around. One other point I wanted to raise, you asked about, I mean, this was a point of contention in the last round of changes. There were provisions you didn't see that were taken out, that they wanted carte blanche and just keep assigning it to whoever they wanted. And we changed that to, I think, provide for the manager's assent, which he would come to you, to make sure that, because again, Mr. Robinson, hopefully he's here forever, but if he's not, we may not be, you know...
He's one person. I wouldn't be surprised that he was.
But we, we wanted to make sure that the next person wasn't going to, had the ability to undertake what we know he can do. And so those provisions were back and forth, I think, in the last couple of rounds.
Well, you've had the benefit of that. Like I said, those were just questions that came to my mind, so I appreciate you explaining them.
Anyone else with any questions, comments?
I have a couple questions. In the proposed agreement, it references Exhibit B, which I don't have, and, which is the site plan.
It's what you see here.
That, it's going to be that?
Okay.
Second question I have is that I noticed that there's some indemnity provisions in here and the requirement that they maintain insurance on the premises. What about the portion of the, for lack of a better word, the little bridge from the back end of the property up to the trail? Whose responsibility is that? Like, say, for example, that it gets built and somebody, five years from now, there's a broken step or the rail are missing boards or something, and they get injured. I mean, I don't think that should be our responsibility.
I would assume under that agreement that it's...
Well, that's, yeah, but, but, but if you look at the, if you look at the, there's an indemnity provision in there. It says arising out, arising from or out of any occurrence in or upon the premises or any part thereof during the term. Well, that portion that's not on the lot is not part of the premises. And it also says, "or to the extent caused by the act or omission of tenant, its agents, contractors, employees, servants, or licensees." Now theoretically, I guess you could read that broad enough.
No, the second part...
But they have a duty to...
To maintain that.
To maintain that. But I mean, it's not real clear in there.
Well, I think, and Mr. Robinson's here, I don't know if he's here with council, but...
Yeah, he is.
I didn't see their talk, sorry. If we would add that, bridge into that section.
Absolutely. I think in fact that probably is actually owned by Mr. Robinson, outside of the premises.
No, if he'd be able to get up to the trail, he'd have to be on the...
It'd be on retirement due to our... No, it's all my property.
Section between the premises and Arrowhead Trail, right?
Yeah. Well, what we're saying is that he's going to construct that entire bridge, this bridge, and it connects up onto the trail. And anything that is, any structure that's required here should be the responsibility of Mr. Robinson.
That's my problem. I think that when he did the servant, I think his property is off towards the trail.
It can't be 100% yours. I would, to the trail, we'd have some right of way.
There's right of way, you know...
Yeah, it has to be a right of way in your side. Well, I, to my, to Mr. Curry's point, could we, because we haven't finalized or signed the agreement, just add that provision so there's, the, the whole entire, whatever we call it, bridge or cartway to the trail will be part of that provision you indemnize it to. Your responsibility for indemnification purposes.
Right, as well as...
The bridge as part of the tenant's property.
And that's all I have.
Could I ask one other question? The address of the company? What, is it Frosty or Frosty Valley or?
1321 Wallbrook Road.
Okay, so that needs correcting in the lease.
Okay, anyone else with a comment? Okay, just to clarify the record, I'll amend my motion to authorize appropriate township officials to execute the lease subject to the provision establishing that the tenant has the obligation to maintain the bridge that will be constructed to connecting the property to the...
And to identify this.
And to identify, correct.
I'll still second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Six one, Mr. Lauer. Is the quarter-to-quarter rate proceeding?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then we'll move on to the public hearing at this point. This is a...
Thank you very much.
...a public hearing regarding zoning ordinance amendments. The purpose of this public hearing this evening is to present information concerning proposed changes to the Peters Township zoning ordinance and the Peters Township subdivision and land development ordinance, as well as to accept comments from interested parties. This evening's public hearing was advertised in the Observer Reporter on April 8th, and April 15th, and April 26th. How is that possible? Okay, it could not have been advertised on April 26th because we're...
No.
So it was advertised on April 8th and April 15th?
Yes.
Correct. Making me look bad, you're giving me a statement.
I'm sorry.
The hearing notice was placed on the township's website and cable television message board. Action on the proposed ordinance changes likely will be taken by council as soon as May 13th, 2019. Mr. Lauer?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Seif. Real quickly, I'm going to just say a few statements here and then turn it over to Seth Coons, our assistant planning director, who will walk council through the amendments. Important items for the record are that the planning commission on March 14th, 2019, at their regular monthly meeting, did review both the zoning revisions and the subdivision revisions, and recommended council approve those. In addition to that, the ordinance was sent to the Washington County Planning Commission. They reviewed it. We have their review letter. And, real quickly, you know, we adopted the comprehensive plan in 2013. We went through a series of workshops to do our zoning revisions. Those were adopted in 2017. Township staff, council planning, we've been working with that ordinance for approximately a year, a little over a year. These are revisions, these are revisions, these revisions reflect some items that both council staff have seen and, just kind of cleaning up the ordinance in terms of the zoning amendments and the subdivision ordinance, is dealing with the proper roads, and Mr. Coons will take us through. Thank you, Ed.
I'm sorry, is there any plans? Seth Coons with the K.K.O.O.N.S., Assistant Planning Director for the Township. Good evening, members of council.
Good.
I'm going to walk us through this PowerPoint real quick. It's very similar to the presentation we gave at our workshop. Very few amendments have been made to that. We gave a similar presentation to the planning commission back in March. Again, we have two amendment categories as part of our zoning ordinance. Substantive amendments, regulatory changes, setbacks, those types of things. And our technical changes, we're just clarifying existing language, fixing typos, stuff that really doesn't have much impact outside of language. I'll get right into our substantive amendments. Mini casinos in the township. We are establishing or proposing to establish mini casinos. Definition of them in our defined terms, and as a permitted use in the general commercial district, and a conditional use in the mixed-use activity one district that came out of some minor amendments out of our workshop here with council and the planning commission. And our medium-density residential districts, we're proposing to amend the side yard setback requirements for principal and accessory structures from 15 feet to seven and a half feet. We felt that 15 feet was simply just too prohibitive, so bringing it, bringing it down to the seven and a half feet was more in line with some of our other districts. In the village residential district, we're establishing an open space requirement and kind of increasing our front setback along Venetia Road. Previously, the village residential district did not have a minimum open space requirement. We're proposing a minimum 25% of the gross tract acreage. Along with that, we're proposing to increase the front setback along Venetia Road, from a 20-foot minimum to a 25-foot maximum, to a 30-foot minimum to a 45-foot maximum. We come to an understanding of the speed of vehicles that travel along Venetia Road, so we feel like pushing those houses off, it just makes it a little bit safer for residents. Please give your voice up, please. Pedestrian design standards throughout the township, this is a number of zoning districts where this is addressed. Our sidewalk widths, we're proposing to reduce them from eight feet to six feet. Six feet is still a good standard that's held across the nation, and we felt our eight feet was just a little bit too restrictive for potential development. In the general commercial district, we're amending our zero-foot build-to-setback requirement, or build-to-sidewalk requirement, I apologize. And we're also proposing to change the front yard setbacks, again, from minimum, maximum, 20 to 25, to 30 to 45. Similar to the Venetia Road situation, the speed of vehicles traveling along Route 19, we felt just pushing potential development back further off the road just makes it a little bit safer.
You have to talk slow.
Can you really clip them here?
Someone who's been in front of a lot of court reporters, I can tell you, you need to talk slower.
Thank you.
Some of our overlay districts, we are proposing to amend our side yard setback requirements for corner lots. Currently, they are required a 15-foot setback on the side for corner lots. It's simply too restrictive for new development, corner lots already constricted in terms of their front setbacks on both streets. So completely eliminating that 15-foot corner setback requirement and going to the base setback requirement for the different housing types. Seven and a half feet for single-family detached and 10-foot for townhomes. In our mixed residential overlay, our housing diversity percentage is a new ordinance that we're, a new regulation that we are proposing. These developments in this overlay district currently do not require a minimum percentage of the housing types that are required per development. For different acreages of development, they're required a different number of housing types. We came to the understanding that without a minimum required percentage, it effectively makes that requirement pointless because you could put one in and meet your requirement. So for new development, 15 to 50 acres, we're proposing a 25% minimum required for each housing type, 15% minimum required for any development over 50 acres in size. Along with this, we're proposing two additional amendments. Any single-family detached dwelling situated on a lot not greater than 10,000 square feet can be considered a standalone housing type as provided in those in a separate table. And in the other table, it's generally single-family detached, townhouse, and single-family detached.
Please slow down, please, please.
We recognize the need to allow for smaller-sized lots of single-family detached in developments in the mixed residential overlay. This has been something that we've seen.
We'll provide you a copy of the PowerPoints, okay? Which will give you a lot of the text that he's recital.
Thank you.
And recognize this as a future need moving forward. Last bit on this, this little table. Because we're doing the minimum of housing types, we wanted in the addition of the smaller lots. Secondary amendment to the table that requires multifamily housing as any development greater than 50 acres. This was the intent of the original zoning ordinance. We felt bringing that through as part of this was essential. This is just an example of these houses on a 10,000-square-foot or smaller lot here. It's typically what you would see and refer to as a patio home, but you can't really call something a patio home in a ordinance. We had to craft language accordingly. Compared that to your standard single-family detached that you may see in the township, it's a stark difference, and we felt it was appropriate to allow these as separate housing Minimum parking requirements for fast-food restaurants, we recognize that the current established 1 to 50 square foot for fast-food restaurant was just, required too many parking spaces for any new development that may come in. We did some studies with existing fast-food restaurants in the township, and those restaurants would require far greater spaces than they currently have. So we're proposing to change that from 1 to 50 per gross square foot floor area to 1 to 75 square foot gross floor area. Proposing some additional amendments to our landscape requirements for the interior parking lots. This would be adding a substantial amount of language to Section 44504, including landscape islands, landscape peninsulas, different shrubs and plantings inside of a parking lot. I do want to make a point that this kind of came out of our workshop with council. It would only apply to double rows of parking along the interior of a parking lot, so you would never see any trees or any of the substantial landscaping directly in front of the building. It would only be double row parking, kind of more inner, inside of a parking lot. This is just an example of what we're referring to here. You can see some of these landscape islands here on the outsides in the middle, some peninsulas along buildings, but nothing directly in front of the building is required as part of the parking lot. Maximum allowable area for wall signs. We recognize that in our general commercial district, we currently allow for less area of wall signs compared to our mixed-use activity center and our village mixed-use districts. So we're amending general commercial from 1.5 square foot per lineal feet of building frontage to, I mean, from 2 to 1.5 in the mixed-use activity center in the village mixed-use districts. Maximum first-floor height requirement. In some conversations with architects and developers, we currently establish 14-foot maximum first-floor height requirement. And a number of our districts presents a substantial challenge for any new development. Typically, tenants need a taller ceiling height than that to get the uses they want in these structures, and we just came to realize that having this standard really provides no benefit to the township. We still have structure height maximum, so that is our regulatory framework to keep structures in a manageable size. Providing an additional limit on the height of the maximum first floor, it doesn't really provide as much benefit.
Is the maximum in feet?
Yes, yes. It's currently 14 feet maximum for your first-floor height. If you start taking into consideration mechanical equipment, it really drops that down. Potential tenants want more vertical height than that, so...
Yeah, but you're saying that, you just said something about, I thought you said that there was some other provision that has a maximum...
We have, we have maximum building height, yes.
Yeah, what, is that in feet?
Yes, it is.
And how many feet is that?
It varies depending on the district. And our general commercial district, it's 45, 45 feet. I'm sure off the top of my head what the other districts have.
What is it in the McMurray Towns and...
51 feet, 51.
For a flat roof?
56 for a pitch roof.
And we didn't address, am I correct, the thing that occurred with this new project where it's going to be more, it's going to be...
We did not change our definition of a floor in that on the Waters project, three-quarters of the garage structure first, we call it the first floor, is underground. There's only a small part of that is exposed on the front. We didn't feel we needed to change that in any way.
Some of us didn't mind it, but...
None of us did mind.
And I think what our intent is to see what it looks like when it's been constructed, and if it needs to be modified, it will be modified.
In the mixed, I skipped one, apologies. Our five-foot maximum side yard setback standard in a number of our districts, town center, village commercial, mixed-use activity center, village mixed-use, it currently only allows for development to be a maximum five feet away from the side yard setback. Looking at a number of our parcels in the township, it just simply is too prohibitive for potential development, so we're striking that maximum setback distance completely.
So, to understand that, then, you're saying that buildings will be right up against each other?
No.
Be a solid storefront, we're proposing?
The five-foot maximum from the side yard means we would now allow buildings to be further than five feet from the side yard. So theoretically, you could have a larger gap now between buildings.
I see, okay.
They still, I believe, could be much closer together, but a maximum distance away.
Well, they'd have to, the closest they could be would have to be 88. They couldn't be in the narrow, you can't make a narrow length.
In some of our districts, you can have right up against the side yard.
Okay.
As part of this project going along here, East McMurray Road, with our new street tape standards and our streetscape poles, we are proposing amendment to require any new development in the town center district to install one of these new streetscape poles for every 100 feet of lot frontage. We're also providing them with this cut sheet here, as you see on this slide. As part of our construction details, I brought it forward just a little bit to keep it in line with what we're talking about here, but keeping this cohesive pattern along East McMurray and along Valley Brook is important. We're already moving forward with that on the Waters project.
I have a question. Do these type of buildings, if we're going to put them closer together, if they can't be closer, do they all require to be sprinkled?
No.
Because that could be a fire issue.
We deal with that at the site plan level and work with the fire department. I would tell you, most of our commercial buildings being built today are sprinkled, and if buildings are tight, close together, they'd be sprinkled.
I just want to make sure that that's something that we address at some point.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Conservation Residential District, our front setback, just proposing to change that from 15 to 20 feet. For our technical amendments, again, these are mostly fixing typos and just some language there and not really changing any regulations. Cluster mailboxes, we currently don't have a definition for cluster mailboxes established, but they are required to us by the post office in any new development, so we're simply providing a definition here that we can refer to when developers are inquiring about that.
One thing on that, I was surprised you didn't specify there needed to be a pull-off area or some minimum area where people could get out of the main road.
We work with developers on that, and that's something we push for. Some of our standards in the, in our, I believe it's our subdivision of land development ordinance, don't allow you to impede upon traffic as you're doing those types of things, so it's somewhat implied at that point, but it's something we can certainly look at.
Planning will have, planning commission's staff.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they... Natural vegetation within a buffer area. We are adding on to the definition of buffer area to allow for existing natural plants and vegetation to be allowed as a part of a required buffer area. And this is really important, we're getting in development, that there's a lot of vegetation there, they're required a buffer, and previously, they may not clearly be able to use that existing vegetation, which most of the time, that's what you're looking for because it's already established and healthy vegetation.
One clarifying on that. If the vegetation belongs to township open space, is there going to be some follow-up as far as maintenance of the buffer? If you're going to allow them to reduce it?
We're...
Or included as part of their requirement?
They would be required to maintain any buffer on their property.
Okay, so that is another thing that planning's going to have to make sure the developer knows.
Right. And something we've talked about internally is, you know, if there's existing vegetation, and maybe it's not substantial enough, they still would add to that existing natural vegetation.
Natural vegetation.
Yeah, yeah, to meet our requirements for buffer areas. The definition for a height of sign, previously established some language in here that can vary, the height of a sign depending on where you're measuring, and in terms of public streets and mean grade. We're going to make it much cleaner and simply state that the base of the sign, measured basically from the mean grade at the base to the top of the sign, provided that you're not elevating the base of the mean grade at the base of the sign to inadvertently increase the height of your sign. It's a much clearer definition and much easier for us to enforce. Definition of lot coverage, we're amending the end of the definition to simply state that it's the maximum area included for building footprints, not parking in areas, just purely building footprint. Our minimum street right-of-way requirements. In our subdivision of land development ordinance, we have minimum and maximum street widths as part of our different classifications. There's some contradicting language in our zoning ordinance. It should be what the subdivision of land development is, so anytime throughout the zoning ordinance where we're referencing these old street widths, we're going to be going in, just amending those to reference our subdivision of land development ordinance, bring it in line with those.
Mr. Coons, just to voice my objection again, I think we're getting a little too narrow on some of these.
Okay.
I think the concern for me is that not only is it going to be difficult with people passing, while we're looking at that as potential speed reduction, if you build out a subdivision and you have people living there and they happen to have visitors or parties or whatever, I think you're going to run into issues personally. So, and I, between just the driving and the living, I think the lot, reducing the width of the roadways could be an issue. Go on, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Just a little graphic here, something in our zoning ordinance that we provide as part of a cut sheet for our street right-of-way sections. Stacking and queuing spaces, we are just amending this table here to state that minimum stacking spaces are required per lane. Wasn't previously clear that as any new development, you'd be required the minimum of spaces if you had two drive-through lanes, two bank teller lanes, in order to maintain proper site circulation. We're just amending that. Billboard signs. The previous definition stated that they can be located no closer than 750 feet from another off-premise sign. Nowhere else in our ordinance is we reference an off-premise sign. The intent there is clearly to be billboard, so we're changing that to billboard. Permits for accessory structures. One of our sections of zoning ordinance says that a zoning permit shall not be required for these following items. It should be required. Those don't require a building permit, they require simply just a zoning permit. Driveway dimensions, we're amending this here table. There was some incorrect use of the word "less than," so we're just changing it to "greater than," to keep it in line with what the intent of the table was. Our floodplain administrator language, simply changing the zoning officer to the township engineer to be designated as the floodplain administrator. We have some amendments to our subdivision of land development ordinance. I apologize, my, the title slide here is a typo, but in our street, in our streets, we have standards that currently kind of give developers incentive to build private roads, to forego township requirements. We're amending these sections to simply state that, you know, any street built, either public or private, needs to comply with Section 38537, all of our street standards, whether or not it's public or private. And it's here in both lots and blocks and general standards as well. Our construction detail specifications, we took this opportunity through all these amendments to amend a number of our construction details, improve them, make them look better. I have copies of all of them after this, but I don't think we want to run through all of our construction details. Any questions? That's all I've got.
Is there any member of the audience who wishes to comment on these proposed changes to the ordinances? Is there any member of council who wishes to comment? Hearing done, I will declare this public hearing closed. Mr. Gromick, are our champions here?
They are.
See Mr. Mills in the audience, so I kind of figured they're here, so... We'll go back to special reports now.
All right. Good job. Good job.
That's it. Yes. The Rose Basketball.
She will get her, make a copy of the PowerPoint.
So that's what you hear?
Should we get him standing there?
Is that her mom?
Yeah, she played in the area, I think she's younger than her sister.
Come on, guys, let's stand up.
Tall bunch.
Yeah.
Is this where Light over there?
Ryan.
You're going to do a picture, Mark?
Like, what do we do?
The answer's no. What's that? You're going to do a picture?
We have the capability of doing that. I thought perhaps council wanted to do that presentation first.
You guys, you want to read your pocket for accreditation? Or what?
No, I've got a bunch of stuff. I've been here for a while, but at least enough.
We definitely want to thank you, congratulate you all. You probably heard that a hundred times, maybe a thousand times already.
Well, ladies, let me say, on behalf of council, we congratulate you. Words cannot express as to how proud we are of you. 30-0 is absolutely amazing. The idea that you didn't lose one single game in the course of an entire season is beyond words, something that has never been done in this township by any sports team, and something that I'm sure you will take with great pride in for the rest of your lives. It's, I'm sure that this is just the first thing that all of you young ladies are going to accomplish in your long and to be storied lives. So, we have a series of honors to bestow upon you this evening. Mr. Gromick, Tom, where are you at? You got the...
Get to you, Gromick.
And just come on up. Okay, each member of the team is going to get their own laminated version of the Township Magazine Commemorative Championship. Is everyone, is everyone here? So, tell them how many are missing, and we can make sure we give them so that they, you know... Okay, I'm going to ask that every member of the team come forward, please, and introduce yourselves. I would read the roster, but since you're not all here, let's start right here. Come on up, and we're going to do a little line, get the microphone, state your name, go on. We're practicing for commencement here, so come on up, state your name.
Hi, I'm Emma Devine.
What position?
Oh, I'm a guard.
I would have guessed that.
Yeah, ladies.
I'm Lizzie Booker, I'm a guard, too.
Hi, I'm McKenna Marissa, and I'm a point guard and wing.
We are bench thirty.
Hi, I'm Abby Peyton, I'm a guard.
I'm Mackenzie Lehman, and I'm a forward.
Hi, I'm Isabel Mills, and I'm a shooting guard.
Hi, I'm Morgan Meridian, and I'm a forward.
Hi, I'm Jordan Mizanani, I'm a guard.
Hi, I'm Zainab Marcosato, and I'm a guard.
I'm Savannah Myers, I'm a forward.
I'm Greta Dorento, and I'm a guard.
I'm Morgan Marissa, and I'm a guard.
Hi, I'm Journey Thompson, I'm a forward.
I'm not sure Dad had some time.
I'm Natalie Barnicot, I'm a guard.
I'm Eva Pugliano, and I'm a guard.
I'm Lizzie McPeak, and I'm a forward.
Okay, will coaching staff come forward as well?
I'm Samantha Lowman, I'm an assistant coach.
And I'm a head coach, Bert Kendall. And since you gave me a podium mic, I just want to...
Start the clock.
No, I just wanted to thank you for recognizing these girls, and what they have done is truly historic. But we talk all the time at practice and throughout the season that they need to respect the game of basketball, their opponents, and realize that they're representing their school and that they're representing our community. And I think that these girls did a tremendous job of recognizing Peters Township this year, and I couldn't be more proud of them, and we appreciate the recognition that you're giving us today. So, thank you very much.
All right, and as our final, we have two things, I need captains to come forward. More towards your girls. I'll come down in a second, but I want to show everybody what we're going to give you. This here is a blown-up version of the drag beam, which I guess you ladies can fight about who gets to keep it. But I guess it'll probably hang in the heist. And second thing, which we are incredibly proud of, these are the replicas, this is a replica of the signs, which we put at every entrance to the township. Personally speaking, as a man who lives in a house full of women, I find it very exciting that finally the girls will also be honored at the township entrances. Not that I have anything against the boys team. Okay, I want all members of council to come down and make one picture with the captain. I was going to follow along, you ready?
Still like Ryan, you're up, I'm going to come down.
Still like Ryan, you're up, I'm going to come down. I was going to follow along, you ready?
Still like Ryan, you're up, I'm going to come down.
I was going to follow along, you ready?
Still like Ryan, you're up, I'm going to come down.
All right. Just be glad it wasn't raining, you understand that, Tom? We have four more upstairs outside my office. Thank you, girls, congratulations. offer to stay for the rest of the meeting? So, we should go back to new business. Item D is resolution adopting the Peters Township Youth Protection Policy.
This policy comes out of a need that was identified as we were doing a risk management assessment in the course of acquiring insurance. Because we deal so much with... Because we deal so much with children in the community, the insurance company was insisted that we look at adopting a policy that provides additional protection beyond just clearances. So, if you look at the policy, it really does a couple different things. One, it reiterates the requirement to have clearances. The second thing it does is it identifies that all of our volunteers and all of our employees who have children in their care are mandated reporters. And quite frankly, I think a lot of people don't realize that. So, one of the things that we're going to be doing for our employees and volunteers who are available, we're gonna have onsite training for mandated reporting. We're also gonna disseminate information to all volunteers that we're gonna ask them to sign that describes what their responsibilities are in that regard. Finally, what the policy does is set standards for what's appropriate interaction between adults and children. So, one of the keys is, for instance, it requires two deep leadership, so that a child should never be at one of our programs simply with an individual, but rather that there be two adults there. Also, it describes appropriate ways to contact children. And so, you know, with that in mind, this policy has been reviewed by the library board, the park and recreation board, the township staff, the solicitor, and I think it's appropriate at this point in time that we adopt this youth protection policy.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 040119, establishing the Peters Township Youth Protection Policy.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven to zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorize signers for the Peters Township Community Day Bank Account.
Is this... This account has existed for years. The signers for this account have always been the park and rec director and a designated member of the Community Day Committee. It was inadvertently changed because, at the beginning of the year, because this account actually resides under our tax ID. And what we're suggesting is that it be returned so that the signers are in fact the park director, the park head and a designated member of the community committee.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 040219, authorizing the Peters Township Park and Recreation Department Head and a designated member of the Community Day Committee to be signers on the Community Day Bank Account.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven to zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is ordinance amending chapter 410 of the Peters Township Code of Ordinances entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
This is an update to reflect the traffic controls that are in place at a variety of intersections. Those were outlined in the manager's report. There were a number of streets that had yield signs on, and when we went based upon a citizen inquiry, went out and reviewed those with a traffic engineer, we have changed those to be stop signs. In addition, you have the Sugar Camp Road and Turkeyfoot Road stop signs that were installed. So, this is simply codifying those changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending chapter 410 of the Peters Township Code of Ordinances entitled Vehicles and Traffic. I don't have a... Is there a number? Cause I didn't... It's not on my...
Would be the next.
It's not a resolution, so that's all I need to do is just reference it?
Yes.
Okay, then that's what I do.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
And then just an ambiguity. If we have a three- or a four-way stop sign, we're calling something the through highway? Look at Sugar Camp and Turkeyfoot? That no longer makes sense.
But I think if you look at, actually, the ordinance, I refer to it as a four-way stop. Than the actual ordinance.
If not, I think that needs to be cleared now.
Okay, we have a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seven to zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorize a change of scope for traffic engineering services related to the Greenlight Go Grant.
So, as council will remember, the township is the recipient of a Greenlight Go Grant. The initial plot behind that grant was to create a signalized intersection at the corner of Thomas and East McMurray Road. So, a couple things have occurred, one of which is insisted correctly from District Twelve, that prior to beginning the engineering on this project, that a model be created that would demonstrate the impact of the traffic signal on and creating improvements. And what was discovered was, coming out of that model, that even if you were to install a traffic signal at this intersection, it would not have the impact that you would hope because this traffic backs up from here, because people can't get into this right turn lane because of a pinch point that is right here. So, for instance, this evening, I'm on the way to dinner, I stopped down at the intersection, and as this line of traffic backed up, this person who has his turn signal on is sitting and can't get into this lane because this sidewalk pinches that lane off. When that line of traffic was able to move forward, there were fifteen cars behind this car who made a right-hand turn down this way. So, what has been suggested by Mr. Mudry and by Pendott is that rather than first focus on a traffic signal, we should take and create a first phase where we improve this intersection by widening this here, putting radar detection instead of loop detectors in this intersection as a way to get that intersection to move more smoothly. To do that is going to take some work, including repaving a portion of East McMurray Road. And so therefore, this is a change of scope in what Mr. Mudry had originally submitted. The details of that change of scope are in your docket. And it's our recommendation that in fact council authorized a change in scope in accordance with Mr. Mudry's letter.
So moved. The motion is second. Any further discussion?
Eventually, we will put in the red light.
Eventually, there will be a red light. It may well be that it's...
We're paying with that with traffic impact fees to accomplish that.
I'm sorry?
We may be paying that... Maybe doing that with traffic impact fees as opposed to a Pendott.
Could I just clarify? You referenced the extension of the addition of a... Or extension of the turning lane there. But on the diagram, it says shoulder or potential right turn lane to Thomas.
Yes, cause one of the things we wanna look at, this actually is wide enough in here to be able... And this is something that Pendott actually did work with us on. There used to be concrete strips in here, and they removed those all. And this would only be a matter of relining this had they not put rumble strips in everywhere where that... Where they painted. So now, that all has to be milled out and repaved. But they're sufficient width, and we're gonna look at this as we... As this begins to get engineered, to actually create a slip lane so you can make this right-hand turn into here without having to stand in this line of traffic.
Okay, so that, what you just described, doesn't look like we need to do anything as far as acquiring property? It's all within the right of way, and we're good, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
But again, the other issue remains.
Thomas Road.
People blocking the entrance to the trail parking lot.
You know, I've been driving about a few times lately, and I don't think that intersection is any different than the situation in West McMurray, with people trying to make the left-hand turn from McMurray to the right. I think it ought to be shut down with a left-hand turn in Thomas and that part of the lot. It's ridiculous. There's not even enough room. You put one car between the intersection, yeah, CBS, between the intersection where it's X thought.
Okay, you're talking CBS, not...
Yeah, whatever's...
Well, I agree with you.
I think it needs to be taken out. It's ridiculous to make that left-hand turn.
I agree with you. Have we talked about that, about Mr. Lauer about that and about asking the CBS to...
Wait, to make a left-hand turn?
What he's saying is, this left-hand turn should not be permitted into here.
It's gonna be CBS all over.
Well, it's happening now, so stop it. I mean, it seems almost senseless.
And plus, you know, isn't there parking on the other side? There is. So, you know, there's that little lot on the other side. Why are they even trying to go in there when they could just park on the other side?
We make a next take every couple of months about CBS and that'd be...
Well, that's true. Well, that's true.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Six one, Mr. Lauer. I see both of our chiefs are here. Next item on the agenda is purchasing procedures for a new fire truck.
So, when we did the township tour, council stopped at the fire station, we had a discussion concerning the need to replace the existing pumper. And out of that discussion came two things. One was, are there different ways to acquire fire trucks than the method that we currently use? And is... Does it make sense in light of the type of construction that's occurring? Should we look at trucks that have smaller wheelbases and therefore tighter turning angle? So, in your docket, it's a report that has actually been authored by Chief Coyle and Deputy Chief McGlocklin myself, and it talks about the different ways you can acquire fire trucks. And, you know, this first method, this custom-built fire apparatus is what you see most municipalities do. You write very detailed specifications. Based upon the specifications, we advertise, we take bids from multiple manufacturers, we verify that in fact the manufacturer meets those specifications. The truck is truly engineered to your specifications, and as a result of that, it exactly mirrors what you're attempting to get in terms of an apparatus. The problem with it is twofold. One, delivery on fire trucks is over a year. So, and if you look in this year's budget, there is not a fire truck that's to be paid for in this year's budget. The idea was that it was going to be bid, built, and it would arrive next year. So, you have that. The other thing is, custom fire trucks, because they're all engineered individually, are more expensive. And it's a much more expensive way to go about acquiring a piece of apparatus. The other method is a program fire apparatus, and there are a few companies that actually build their own chassis and build their own bodies and therefore can sell you a standard fire truck. What Dan has referenced is that there are two companies out there right now that do that kind of thing. The third method of acquiring a fire apparatus is to acquire a piece of fire apparatus that has been built as a demo. So, the manufacturers build these. In fact, when we were looking at the aerial truck that we acquired, Rosenbauer bought an aerial demo here that they had built. So, these trucks are built as a marketing tool. They tour to various cities, various conventions, and as a way to market their product. When they're done with that, and I would assume that's normally in September, October, those trucks go up for sale. So, the challenge is, you have to, you know, to make any sense of this, you have to find a demonstration piece of demonstration fire apparatus that kind of meets what it is that you would buy if you were building this custom. So, for instance, we have had great luck in our recent purchases buying stainless steel trucks. And so, the preference is to buy a stainless steel truck. Well, all the demonstration fire trucks that are being built aren't necessarily made out of stainless steel. The same thing is true in terms of how it is equipped and the size of the wheelbase and all, it could vary based on what the manufacturer wants to do. So, when Chief Coyle went out to look, there is a list of, in the report, a list of demonstrator trucks that are out there for this year. And by chance, there is this truck from Toyn that if in fact we were overriding up specifications, this thing would probably pretty much mirror what it is, our specifications, and what it looks like. I don't know that this one is, but the one, the demonstrator that they have is a stainless steel truck. It's also has that shorter wheelbase and tighter turning radius. The... One of the challenges when you're looking, at least I think in terms of these demonstrators, is to understand whether or not you're actually getting a value. The thing about this truck is, this is a truck that was built for the city of Nashville. They have bought many of these trucks, and we have the pricing information as to what Nashville paid on multiple orders. And when you compare that to what they're suggesting to us, the value of this truck would be as stainless steel as opposed to aluminum, which is the Nashville truck, it's a very good value. And it's substantially below that which we have programmed in the budget to buy the truck next year. So, if you were to do this, you would be buying this through the CoStars program. And one of the things that Mr. Coyle has been able to arrange is, this demonstrator truck is going to be here in mid-May, right Dan? So, there would be actually be a chance to see this truck. But the question for council is, is this a method of procurement that you feel comfortable with? We'd end up with this truck about six months, seven months earlier than what we would have otherwise. I'm not concerned about that from the standpoint, it would take a budget amendment, but to take advantage of the value, whether it's this, you know, this year or next year, I don't think makes a whole lot of difference. The other thing that I had recommended before, and I will recommend again, is that the township is going to have to do a bond issue in relation to the work being done at the park. And just as we did with the ladder truck incorporated that purchase into that bond issue, I would do the same here because its impact on the budget will be less and the financing will be very favorable.
How much are we looking at saving in terms of...
I'm gonna get Dan and Mike to talk to us about this.
It says that in 2019, other departments ordering Nashville pumper paid $503,846, and it looks like this one's like $448?
Yes, $448,000, the way they have it coming out of the factory. There's... Yeah, we'd have to do painting, and we'll have to do a little bit more work on the bumper and some of the other compartments, which we've kind of estimated that the truck is gonna be, you know, four eighties. About two and a half feet shorter. Oh, it's...
It's almost exactly wagon two.
Yeah, it's a little... Yeah, just a tad shorter than wagon two.
That probably makes sense with these...
Yeah, a lot of the larger cities are going to this. I mean, City of Pittsburgh has trucks very similar to that, the size. And then they've gotten bigger, now they're trying to go back smaller. But, you know, the city of Nashville was, is really happy with the units that they have because of that. And a turning radius on these things is pretty phenomenal. Oh yeah, it starts the day that you pick, you take delivery of the truck. This truck will probably be available late August, but I can tell you, once it comes out and starts hitting the shows, they're actually looking for somebody to... It'll probably get purchased way, way before that, and...
How many miles do you anticipate?
About, it should be about 2,500 miles on it when it's all said and done. It only really... It's kind of an eastern, eastern part of the United States truck. Out west, they want something a little bit bigger, you know, a lot of them are tandem axle with big water on it and things of that nature. This is pretty much designed as a east coast type piece of apparatus. Seven fifty.
Which is what we're going with now. Entry one, seven fifty, most of our... Five hundred, yeah.
And wagon two is pretty much the same thing. When we went down to emergency one, that was a Philadelphia spec. And we saw it, and we said, hey, you know, hey, it worked. I mean, they allowed us to make certain changes to it. I mean, they allowed us to make certain changes to it. But a lot, that, one of the things that becomes a little bit different with a demo is, we, we're able to have a lot of flexibility after the fact. The factory won't do it, but the factory will warranty any of the work that's done on it, i.e. paint work and compartment changes and things of that nature. So, that would all be as one number. Well, I guess the situation you have is, once that truck comes out in May, it comes and look at it and see if that's in fact the way you want to go with it. And then I, you know, that's the time that you sign a contract with them, and pretty much they'll tell you, okay, here's the deal with the truck, you know, you can, you know, we'll get it to you August or September, and then it's going to take a couple of months to get it ready to go. But Paul was saying like six or seven months. Right now, if you write, you finish a set of specs by the time we go out to bid, and, you know, there, there are 440 days is build time for 90% of the manufacturers at this point. So, 440 days is, you know.
And they've been late most of the time.
Late next year.
Exactly. And, you know, that's one of the things you avoid. You avoid all the nonsense of back and forth trying to, you know, go out there and then there's a delay on something, or there's a penalty clause and this and that and the other thing. And a lot of these manufacturers build the penalty clause into it. They figure that it's going to take a, you know, month or 45 days or two months. So, whatever it ends up being per day, if it gets knocked off, I mean, you look at the, the Rosenbauer, what was that, almost $50,000? Forty, forty-some? Yeah. I mean, on penalties. So.
So, as far as availability, you're calling these demos, are there a lot of them around? Or are you potentially going to bid the company to get somebody?
We, we tried to shook the tree a little bit to see what was out there. There are some demos out there. A large majority of them are aluminum body trucks, which, you know, we were looking at stainless steel. There are some stainless steel trucks out there, but I think the closest one was Seadraven. They were what, 510,000 off the door.
Yeah, and a little slightly larger than this truck is too.
What's the benefit of the stainless? Could it move faster?
Yeah, the corrosion, everything. I, you know, the, the real benefit of these is, it's a bolted stainless body. So, if it is involved in an accident and a compartment gets smashed, you call them, they'll send you a whole compartment. It's a bolt-in, bolt-on. You don't have to be cutting it and welding it. You know, you definitely have a lot less downtime. And a lot of times with the panels, you can get them painted and everything. It's kind of a, you know, the old transformer thing, you know, you smash the thing against the wall and it'll explode, you kind of throw it back together. It's nut and bolted. And it's, it's a desirable way of building the trucks. A lot of companies are looking at it. It's, it's a, it's a labor-intensive build, to be honest with you.
It seems like a no-brainer. You guys are on board.
Well, we made a list of must-haves, and this truck meets the must-haves. We like the truck on paper, we like the delivery time, we like the price. The one thing we don't know is if we physically like the truck. Hopefully, we'll see it mid-May, and Chief Coyle has pulled a couple of strings to be able to get it here and kind of give us, if you will, first right of refusal, so.
Two questions. One is an absent minded, I don't remember what piece of equipment this is going to replace.
This will replace the 1988 E1 pumper truck.
The E1 pumper?
Yeah.
That will go, and then we just keep moving them down the line. The truck that, I mean, is basically going to run in its place has 65,000. It's a 2007. We just probably put, I don't know, six, seven, eight thousand dollars in the last couple of months, and we probably have another seven or eight thousand that we need to put back into it. So, what we were hoping to do is, when that truck's all done, you would get this truck, you'd put the, the engine that's in service right now in first-line service and do that as all mutual aid calls, running them on, you know. RIT calls to Washington or Cecil or something to keep the first-line truck, kind of trying to keep the mileage down on.
And this would be the first-line truck?
Yeah.
Your truck would be the first one?
Because the, the 2007 truck has definitely been run hard.
That was the old rescue? Is that one in the 2007?
No. Well, it's, I'm sorry, it's a 2010.
You are correct. And what, engine two is what's labeled engine two now. Station two is a 2000, 2006 or seven.
So, it wasn't.
Six.
It was at one point in time, yeah.
That will still be the first out piece over at station two because it has the compartment space for the second set of rescue tools, kind of running it as a second rescue truck out of station two. And it has a larger.
You're confusing me now as to which one it's replacing.
It's replacing the 1988 truck.
So, the engine one is at station one now is going to be reserved?
Well.
It will be the second line out apparatus, yes.
Yeah.
So.
What do you need from us?
Well, tonight, we don't need anything but a sense of, a sense of counsel that you're okay with proceeding in this direction. Because come mid-May, we're going to take, have a chance to look at this truck, we're going to get a formal proposal from Toine with regard to acquiring it under the Co-Stars program, and we would have to bring that back to council at the second meeting in May for you to take action on.
My, my question is directed directly at Dan. You've had a business relationship for.
Yes, yes, I do.
As far as I know, decades.
Yes.
And do we have any residual conflict concerns associated with our chief being a.
He disclosed. Actually, it's disclosed in the docket tonight. I can tell you this, from my perspective, that relationship has only served the benefit of the township over the years. And in fact, you know, to the extent that we have Toine trucks in our fleet right now, Dan has never received a commission from Toine for those purchases, so.
I just think the public needs to understand that.
No, I, I totally agree. And it, you know, and what we've said along the line is, I mean, a lot of the warranty work and stuff that was being done was being done by myself at the station, so it wasn't going out of there. But after the fact, I mean, we found other vendors to go ahead and work on it, and we were able to, you know, purchase a lot of the parts at, you know, the cost to a vendor, myself, and pass that on to the township. Anyway, there's been several times the township just wrote a check right to Toine for the parts, and we installed them at the station. So, I mean, it's helped to have a downtime and things of that nature. But on the backside of this is when this truck is finished, when, when it's ready to go into service, I'll be the one that's going ahead and painting it and getting it ready for the, for the fire department. So, I'll look what they were, they're looking for.
Chief, based on that, once you get a look at it and verify that it has everything you want, then it really is the truck you want, will you bring it back? Will you be able at that point to give us a ballpark of what additional costs?
Well, that's what Paul was saying. There'll be a set proposal. It'll be the base price of the truck and then the additions. And I think we've bonzed those around. It's going to be in the mid-four eighties.
We're still looking at a 70 to 75,000 dollar.
Yeah.
Cost savings, whatever what the budget number is, so.
Right, I was going to say, it's still going to be less than the old methods we used, and it's going to be a faster delivery, so.
Which are both pluses for us.
We did a similar thing at first.
All right, so you don't, you need a motion from us?
I don't need a motion. I just need a consensus of council, which I think I have, and we can move on.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
The next item is pay, one second. Hey, Tom, can you throw another log in the air conditioner?
Yes.
We think we were honoring the hockey team here tonight. Next item on the agenda is payroll and bills.
Chairman, I reviewed your payroll bills. I find them are a little bit crazy.
I'll second. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a question. What was the 45,000 the community bank for? Where does, where is that? I couldn't, I couldn't decipher the description.
That's Public Works, that's the payment for building five, the Public Works Department.
Sorry, I couldn't figure what that said. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is correspondence. Is there any correspondence we need to discuss, Mr. Lauer?
No.
Moving on to reports. Does any member of council have any questions or comments with regard to any of the committee reports?
I just had a comment. It's all, you read the police report. They reported a number of home break-ins, it seems. And I wondered, perhaps we need to just remind people now that the weather's nice and everyone's opening their doors and windows or maybe not closing them to be exercise caution. There were quite a few reports.
Well, there was one where the, I think the.
The people came.
The wife was with the children, and then fortunately, she was able to like lock them in and call the police. But, I mean, that's pretty brazen, I would think.
Yes.
Next item, let's move on to miscellaneous. First item is discussion of an ordinance proposed to create and administer local standards relating to discrimination in employment practices, housing, and public accommodations.
Yes, Ms. Kidd told Kingdoe, a council meeting as part of audience comments, and presented us with a sample ordinance that had been adopted in Mount Lebanon, as well as an ordinance that had been adopted in the city of Pittsburgh that creates local standards relating to discriminate, discrimination in employment practices, housing, and public accommodations. Mr. Smith and I have had a chance to review that. Where I would agree that the township has the ability to adopt ordinances in this area. I don't think the need exists. And the reason I say that is, even in the information that was provided us, it says, with the state having stalled on LGBTQ legal equality for several decades, communities across Pennsylvania have organized to enact local laws and policies. One of the things that it's changed, subsequent to the adoption of this ordinance in Mount Lebanon, is that the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission has redefined the protected classes. One of the protected classes of the state of Pennsylvania, and it has been for years, is, has to do with sex. And in, and in general, in the past, that has been interpreted to mean simply male/female, you know, discrimination based upon gender. Last year in September, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission issued guidance that indicated that in fact, that word sex is also going to now apply to questions of sexual orientation. So, the State of Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission now will accept and research and prosecute cases of discrimination based upon that definition. Where, as a matter of public policy, where I get concerned is, local municipalities are not in a position to be able to effectively administer ordinances based upon discrimination, particularly when you look at this ordinance, which would have us interpret and enforce state and federal laws with regard to discrimination. So, like, for instance, you know, as, as council is well aware, we have sought direction under the Fair Housing Act. And what I can tell you is, that act by itself is so complex and the regulations so complicated, and the amount of case law concerning, concerning the interpretation of the law and the regulations, there is no chance that anyone here at our level could ever administer that in an effective manner. And where it ought to be administered is where, is where it has originated, and that's with the federal government. And the same is true with regard to these claims under state, under state law and state regulations. The best place for those to be handled effectively is at the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, who has both the resources and the expertise to do that. So, I personally do not think, and not even discussing the substance of the issue, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to be doing this because if you do, if you choose, I think the bad thing is that it, it creates a sense of protection is being given that in fact doesn't exist because we can't administer this. And so, you know, for that reason, what I would propose that we do, and it's what we do when there are questions that are posed to us with regard to regulations with regard to water quality or other things that are governed by the state and federal government, we, we direct our residents to the appropriate state and federal agency to resolve those issues. And I think that's what is the appropriate role for the township when it comes to these questions of, of protected classes and discrimination, so.
I take it that there was a solicitor's report as well that I reviewed, and I think.
I concur, and I recommend to the council not adopt the ordinance for those reasons set forth by the manager and some other reasons, based on my research.
Since there isn't an ordinance before us at this point, I don't know that we need a motion.
No, there's no motion. There's nothing pending. I think it was just a request that we review it, provide our advice to council.
I don't object to council rendering a consensus that we would not take action on.
You want to make a motion to that effect, Mr. Lewis?
I don't know if we can do a motion.
I think we can do them. I don't think we're required to do a motion, but I think we can.
I think at this point, it seems that we collectively at council are comfortable with how we as a township conduct business. We, we obviously adhere to all the federal and state laws. So, when it comes to the way the township as a municipality functions, we're comfortable with the way that's administered and how we administer business, not only with employees, but with bids and everything else that we do. We're, we're in compliance. So, I think we're comfortable. And, and based on everything you've said, it seems as if it's kind of, it would be somewhat redundant, and also not only redundant, but misleading to imply that we could do as well as the existing organizations who are in place to handle those sorts of issues. Is that what I heard you say?
That's exactly correct.
All right, so it sounds like we have a consensus among council that we're not going to pursue this type of ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Merrill. Do you want to give us an update on the ad hoc recycling committee?
I would like to do that. First of all, I'd like to tell you that the response to the invitation was very good. We had 15 residents respond. They replied to the announcement, and they brought a broad array, and I mean, a huge array of skills, experience, work and life experience, and a lot of enthusiasm about recycling. All of those people were invited to the April 9th meeting of the EQB in the old paint. It was very lively discussion. Everyone kind of put forth what their primary concerns were, and we did some brainstorming about that. And because of the great response, rather than go to the idea of identifying only three people, the EQB group, Amanda Krebs is chairwoman, and we all kind of agreed that we would try to engage everyone in some activity going forward. So, she and I will be talking about how to potentially set up some subcommittees to look at the various aspects beside glass, other plastics, paper, other sorts of recycling of appliances, yard waste, composting. One person's really excited about composting. So, we're looking at different things that might talk about education, more communication to the community, and possibly ways to engage the county and even the state in bringing a higher level of interest and maybe looking at this as something they could look at as far as economic development down the line. Because recycling is a growing business, and perhaps that's something that could happen. So, not that everybody's going to do everything, but we have a lot of ideas flying, and we'll hopefully develop them and focus them over some time. Did anybody have any questions? I did send this to Mr. Lauer, though we didn't get it in the packet. If anyone had any questions about what we're doing, real quick. But today's Earth Day, by the way, and so, hooray for the Earth.
Friday's Arbor Day.
Right. Peter's Township Cleanup Day is this Saturday. The EQB is still soliciting participants. We're hopeful that many of these people will join in the group. That information is on the website. There are also some special recycling going on, and also Drug Take Pack Day the same day. And then coming up, May 4th is a pop-up glass collection. PRC will be bringing bins into the township at the middle school between nine and two, I think, Mr. Roski. So, that'll bring that in here, and Michael Brothers is continuing their ongoing collection in Beppo. So, nothing definitive, but there's a lot of enthusiasm, and hopefully I'll have something more concrete to report.
No, we appreciate you taking the reins on this, Mr. Merrill.
Well, thank you for asking.
Okay, is there anything that any member of council would like to see on the next agenda?
Could you give us an update on the status of recruiting for the deputy fire chief?
Hopefully, by the next meeting, there will actually be a deputy fire chief.
So, you've been interviewing?
Yes.
And we've had some good outcomes?
Yes, we, we will have, as of this Thursday, we will have interviewed six candidates. Three of them are internal candidates. We're still in the process of evaluating that.
Okay, is there anyone, is anyone else have anything for the good of the order?
The only thing I can think of is they're not. The only thing I can think of is, there not a Peters Lake celebration this weekend also, that I've read an announcement about?
Did you see anything?
Yeah, I don't know that. It seemed to be in conflict with Cleanup Day. I sort of recall seeing an announcement to that, so.
There are so many things happening in this township, I can't tell you that I know everything that happens in this.
I thought somebody else might pick up on it, but, okay.
Do we have an executive session tonight? We have very brief meetings. Meeting adjourned.